Uh, do please stand for the invocation and pray. And I believe we have a pastor who would like to use some indication.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day, day by day, our daily bread. And forgive us of our debts, as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen.
Do you pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Barbara Manuel?
Uh, I'm here in reference to my water bill.
Thank you, ma'am. Rod Leverett?
I am. I have some, I'm more just because I can do that.
Okay, nineteen and six?
Yes.
Okay. As we get to them, just please, I don't want to forget. Again, it's item one, discuss and take action on the approval of the city council. Update the special meeting minutes date December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. What's council's pleasure?
I move that we postpone, uh, item number one to next meeting.
Okay, so probably moving second, item one, we postpone till next meeting. You heard the motion, ready for the question?
Oh, no.
It's number two.
It's the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I regret my motion.
Okay, Councilor Rosemary, I move that we approve, uh, the special meeting minutes that were very detailed for December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Say.
It's been properly moved and seconded that item one, uh, the special meeting minutes date December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. You've heard the motion, ready for the question?
Question.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, have the same right? Motion passed. Item two. Is this one you want to move on?
Yes, sir. I move that, uh, we move item two to the next agenda.
Second.
And cast been properly moved and second, item two be moved to the next agenda. You've heard the motion, ready for discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, have the same right? Motion passed. Uh, I, on H.T. Jones Elementary, that is simply, um, since it's an ongoing issue, I just wanted to put that out there for the record more than anything else. Had a meeting with Superintendent Moran. There is an issue with some water held between their southwest corner and, uh, Santee Street. And this is just something that we're taking a look at. Our city engineers are aware of it. There's a subsequent meeting, uh, coming up. But, um, also had a meeting with the university and Superintendent Moran to try to get them involved, uh, just so for the record, since the water's coming from the north, from the university's, uh, eight-hundred acre farm. Uh, this way, as, uh, as the discussion continues, you'll be aware of what's going on with that and, uh, you can pick up on it. But it was just a meeting to become aware of a problem. No solutions were, um, done because again, it's just really coming up to be discussed now. Councilor Rosemary?
Uh, does this have to do with the additional information we got in reference to the water and sewer gallons for all the elementary schools?
Oh, no.
That's not for this question?
No, that's the next one.
Okay.
Oh, so this, this is just like FYI or anything else? So that, uh, again, as it comes up before council or as the intermediate something like you all know, maybe it took place and there's an issue over there.
I have a question for number four, so hold on a second.
Okay. Uh, number four, the, uh, H.T. Jones Elementary and, uh, other actually residence bills. Uh, council, in your packet, you have, uh, two sheets from, that the superintendent brought to me, uh, basically showing the water bill at H.T. Jones and the water bill at about eight other schools. And, um, it appears that there is an issue with the commercial meter and how our guys were not necessarily reading the meter correctly. So I had a meeting last week with USW and they're investigating and taking a look at it. But it's got something to do with commercial meters. So now I'm asking them to audit and take a look at all the commercial meters in the city, since our guys weren't as familiar with reading commercial meters. There's, uh, in, 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 in short term, the only thing I really remember, you're looking at either hundreds or thousands, depending on which number you read. Am I right, Mr. Penney?
Yes, sir.
So while, when they get that report and bring it back, then we'll have some specifics. But that's why those numbers, hopefully, uh, because Jones was literally ten times the volume of all the others. And the difference in what you read could easily, uh, account for that. Yes?
Were there any other commercial meters or any other sites that were also mentioned or?
Well, they're taking a look at all of them. And then they'll bring us back a complete report because they did find one with Jones since it came up like that. Um, but they're taking a look at all of them. And we, uh, got with Ms. Durham and what have you. And we really tried to come up with every commercial, you know, like apartment complexes and restaurants and gas stations and everything, just to make sure the commercial readings are correct. Now, the concern becomes, uh, particularly, particularly at Jones because they've been paying these prior bills. So again, just putting it out there so as we take a look at it, we got the, the history. It's not that old, but all he brought was like this current school year. So again, just keeping that in front of council.
Yes, Councilor Rosemary? Uh, my, our question had to do with, when I looked at the report, it was, uh, this was what came from Waller ISD?
The superintendent.
Yes. Uh, when I looked at the bills under the waters and sewer usage, uh, I, I think it goes back to, I think, what council have been asking for, for like the last three years in reference to the rate based upon the amount they're paying. So when you talk, when, when, since Jones Elementary is only like two years old, give or take, um, and the water usage versus, I think, they were highlighting how many more students were in one elementary versus the other, which again, I guess they can use that for, for, uh, averaging. But again, part of it is, what does the meter say? And I think it, it comes to the point, you made a point where you said they've paid the whole entire bill, what it was. Um, have we, I don't know, we're currently talking to the university. We've set up a meeting. Have we really, um, have we connected back as far as not necessarily usage being the issue, but the charge? Because if we don't know the rate, like, so he has dollar charges. And I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure if you looked at the usage charge, both for water and sewer, you'd be like, why isn't I paying this much for Prairie View? You know, we in the thousands and everybody else's is in the hundreds based upon the elementary schools. And so when we, is this just a usage question? I guess goes back to what you were saying earlier versus more of a rate issue. And have you set up a meeting with, um, you know, the university and the school district? I know the school district is accustomed over ours, but I'm, um, they're also paying a substantial amount of money. And so when we go to try to negotiate the rate with the university, that may be some leverage or an opportunity to having them at the table. So the university sees, well, this is, this is not just the city of Prairie View. This has a direct connection to some of our customers. So you may want to, you know, Waller ISD or some others. So that's just a, when I look at this and, and I was trying to check the numbers, I had to rethink, I thought my eyes was playing tricks on me. I thought it was like forty-seven thousand, but it's like four hundred thousands of, of water. And so I, um, that's a lot of water. So that means that we're gonna, we're gonna go back and recheck all these meters?
Yes. And, 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 uh, your, your point's valid. And all we were looking at really was the rate, I mean, the gallons used. Because the gallonage could really, well, the gallonage would impact the rate, whatever the rate was. Because as you said, they have one, two, three numbers in two, four, really five months that are averaging seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons in a month. So whatever the rate was, this high gallon, which again, hopefully is just the reading hundreds versus thousands, uh, may really account for it. And then it would come down. But as the, uh, as all the rates are taken a look at and adjusted, this would fall in line. But that the high gallonage was the major issue, uh, that he actually brought up too. That, um, if you notice that Roberts Road and Holloman Elementary, and I just made the note there, that's my writing, he mentioned they have a hundred and twenty, two-hundred more students than Jones, yet their usage was much, much lower. So yeah, that, that report will hopefully bring out a lot, um, along those lines. Thank you. The, the other, uh, issue, uh, had to do with, and, and again, we're hoping that the new program with ABR alleviates a lot of it. You know, maybe our old system, uh, and again, I, um, spoke with Ms. Durham again on this, this week as we've had all sorts of backing for, for our, our whole, almost four years with what's going on with somebody's, uh, water bill and that sort of thing. And she also, uh, uh, pointed out in our discussion that this was, quick water was here before you came in. And it's, it's been that same system and, um, many same problems for a long time. So hopefully, again, the new system will alleviate that. And I see we've got smart meters on the agenda as well, uh, that type of thing. The, uh, item five, Trilogy, uh, it shared some information with you to start the discussion on, we've had and even in all of our short time here, you've seen where our ordinances either don't meet, they're not tight. We've been hearing more and more from, uh, everyone, from our city engineer to USW, uh, about the subjectiveness and really outdatedness. So what they've got and, uh, what they submitted is a sampling of some of the, uh, surrounding area, uh, ordinances where, uh, it was just my simple thought because of, I've seen the money we spent trying to update them or running into issues, that if we could find and adopt someone else's that were more updated in the area, then we could just customize what we need and change to Prairie View instead of changing so many one at a time. And they're online and people are trying to follow them and it's difficult. Uh, Mr. Underwood?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Council. So when we first started working for Prairie View, we did notice a difference in the ordinances and how current they were or not current. Uh, some of the ordinances here haven't been updated since the seventies, which is about the age of a city. So in that conversation, like the mayor said, we started, we actually initially started now trying to update each one and found that to be tedious, overwhelming, and quite costly. And the mayor did come up with the idea of looking at other cities to see if we could just, you know, in one fell swoop, just take their ordinances, knowing that theirs had been recently updated. That would save the city some money, some time. And then you have to sort of tweak them to your own specific needs here, but it would be a lot shorter process to bring your ordinances up to date. So what we did do, we looked at, uh, uh, ten, twelve cities from the start. After consultation with the mayor, we narrowed that down to three different cities. And then we did a deeper dive into their ordinances and literally did a side-by-side comparison of how their ordinances were written on specific topics, especially as it related to water, wastewater, as it related to detention ponds, and as it related to permitting. Those are the issues that we've ran across the most recently. And, and after that, uh, review of their information, what we found was that Jersey Village appeared to be the best fit. That's our recommendation to the city. Uh, I think we need to provide you guys Jersey Village's ordinances. It, uh, it's a lot to take in. I don't know if anybody, it's perfect reading, uh, in the evening when we're trying to relax. Uh, ordinances aren't the best read, reading document, but it's not a novel by no stretch. Uh, but we did take the time to do it and, uh, Jersey Village's ordinances have, was updated in two thousand and eleven. And some of them appear to be, uh, adopted from the city of Houston, but tweaked to a small city, which I think works well for, for this community. We looked at cities that had gone through a growth spurt similar to what, what you're going through here. And, uh, so I, our suggestion is that Jersey Village.
Now, when you say they've been updated since two thousand and eleven, but unlike ours, they've been codified, in other words, updated, there's laws changed and that sort of thing. So they're overall more current?
That's correct.
In addition to the updated?
That, that's correct. Code and ordinances change yearly, if not more than that. City of Houston's, you know, after Hurricane Harvey, everybody started updating a whole lot of different stuff to bring things up to the, uh, issues that were brought to light after Hurricane Harvey. So they're, uh, they're the most current ones out of the three that we looked at.
Council, questions, thoughts? I know you may want to take a look at it and that sort of thing. But, uh, as we get to, can you send us the link?
Yep.
Two, if you'll send it to Ms. Bynum, she'll send it out to all of us. And, and then people can take a look at, uh, Jersey Village. And any, any others council wants to see? Yeah, that's it.
Uh, I just want to say I appreciate the diligence Trilogy and USW has been doing in terms of updating our ordinances, just so that it can be up to date. And just more, and more clear, uh, more clear to be able to read. So I just, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, in the ordinances, as, um, as far as like the scope of work or kind of the direction, are we going, um, we're just, we're focusing on the permitting process and inspection, correct? Because part of this is policy and then part of this is process in, in, in the office. And so, um, I'm, I'm assuming with the recommendations, they're gonna kind of bring us back, kind of like, we don't have the twenty people that Jersey Village has in the office? Or a hundred people like the city of Houston? And so it would be a recommendation based upon what we could do? And then we may need to have an additional person or something like that? So they, since they know the city of Prairie View, they'd be able to give us that recommendation to be able to help put in the processing piece, also the policy piece, so both of them go hand in hand?
Yeah, and, uh, and we want to send it to council in that way because Ms. Griffin's gone through our ordinances for a few reasons, for a few different times. But again, you'll be able to see the overall. And again, what we can easily do is codify it and bring it down to and change what's relevant to us as opposed to constantly running into and getting calls and emails that we follow what you said, but what you said is online and is wrong. You know, things of that nature. So if you'll share with us that information, then we'll have an opportunity to have a review by everyone, including council, and see how we can adjust it to the city where, where we need to.
Yeah, and that, and the way we approached it, when we looked at it from who's gonna be the end user of these documents at the end of the day? The question is, can a development pick it up, understand it, and, uh, you know, comply with it?
And is it current? That's a major issue.
Is it current? And, and does the staff that we do have here in the city, do they understand them themselves so that they can enforce the ordinance? That whole piece of it comes after you determine whether these are right ones for you.
Now, we use Franklin. Did you happen to notice that Jersey Village uses Franklin? Because again, we want to make sure, or take a look at who is their updating service so we can make sure ours stay updated once we get an updated set. And, uh, and, and again, from a policy standpoint, we can see how that's gonna be handled once it's implemented, if that's what, uh, was chosen.
I'll, I'll get that email out, uh, tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Presentation by Councilmember Randall and USW regarding smart meters.
I'm gonna ask this, I'm gonna ask this out and be tabled to the next meeting because, uh, Corey, he's gonna have, uh, Accurate Meter come out and give the presentation. So I'm gonna ask this to be tabled.
And, and I think that's what he said to us, was that Accurate Meter?
I think he said he had something in his report today pretending to, uh, to call us, but he never had them coming to the presentation.
Sounds good. Did you want to make a motion on it or?
I move that, um, item, item six be moved to the next, uh, seat, councilman.
Second. It's been properly moved and second that item six, uh, presentation by Councilmember Randall and USW regarding smart meters be moved to the next meeting. You've heard the motion, ready for the discussion? All in favor? Opposed, have the same right? Motion passed. The infrastructure grant, um, with Hurricane Harvey, Mr., uh, Houston, Nick Houston, uh, emailed back, Ms. Bynum, that he couldn't be here this evening. So we'll carry that over and again, request Mr. Houston to, uh, to return on that. We are, oh, that's, that's not, okay. So we'll carry number seven over as well. Uh, item eight, Texas General Land Office has four billion dollars in new Hurricane Harvey grant opportunities. And the city is working with, uh, USW and, uh, one or two other entities to see about what we can get to help with some of the issues we have in, uh, in our city. Um, this is something I had shared on before, but, uh, Mr. Bossed with USW happened to be at a meeting a couple of weeks ago and it came up again. So again, this is just, there's money out there that we can't apply for yet, but we're looking to go after it and just want to keep it in the front. So we don't forget that timeline because I think the application started in March, if, if I recall. So again, just FYI or anything. Um, had a meeting, uh, got an entity trying to, uh, bring in a hotel and again, just keeping that up so when it comes, you know, council can address it accordingly. The Shell gas station convenience store with barbecue, item ten, Shell gas station convenience store with barbecue Mexican food and checkered restaurant next to it are due to open in May. So again, you can make note of that. But again, that's, uh, because people see it and they ask when and that sort of thing. So that way everyone will have the information. I called them a couple of days ago to, to get that. The Mellon Foundation Grant is, uh, moving along. Ms. Tanya DeBose with the African-American Cultural Project and Independence Heights is working with Texas Southern students as well as our Prairie View students along with Dr. Robinson out of, uh, Spelman University. So we're looking to, uh, again, pick up on the historical components of, uh, the city. It's a city, the city's in the grant and we pulled in some students from the university. So it's a city project. So as you continue to, to hear about that or it matriculates down the road, um, because some people thought it was a university and it's not, it's a city entity. The, uh, Panama City of Prairie View, PBA and MU Trade Mission with San Antonio Airport about a year and a half ago, that was reported on the council, has now cultivated, there are two groups of students, uh, taking trips to Panama. One of them from the College of Agriculture is particularly, we're digging deep with starting, uh, student exchange programs, sharing research. Our researchers are going down, trying to help with like the, decreasing the spoilage from farm to market, things of that nature. But again, you'll hear more formally about that. And we'll try to have, uh, one or both of them come to council after the trips. The trips are scheduled to be made. And the legacy of Prairie View student housing, that, let's see, Prairie View, that's the one on FM ten ninety-eight, just past, um, the bridge there. And before you get to Bean Street, they submitted their plans. So I just wanted to keep that in front of council. Uh, USW and, uh, you have the civil plan. So the plans and everything, then the process been turned over to our licensed water people as well as our city engineer and Bureau Veritas on inspection folks as well. Any other questions on those projects? Again, just letting council know so as things come up, um, you're aware of them and can address them. Next, we'll have the swearing in of G. Lopez. Did you?
Did you? Did you, Ron?
Oh, okay. Okay. That was taken care of. Judge did that last time, so we're good. Okay, so we can pass that. City council reports. Councilor Rosemary?
Citizens, uh, thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve. Uh, as you know, we've been definitely, uh, putting in a lot of different work and efforts to not only, uh, engage people with the census that's going on, but also opportunities, uh, to grow and develop the city. Um, as I gave in my report, um, at the last meeting, uh, continue to work with Councilman Wallace on, uh, an agenda item that is here with USW in reference to updating our sewer and water tap fees, which increase, uh, the amount of money and revenue we bring in. For example, you'll hear, we'll talk about it going from a hundred dollars to eight hundred dollars that a person would pay, uh, to put in a tap fee, uh, which would bring a substantial amount of revenue, um, within our public works. I had the opportunity to be working with Councilman Jones on, uh, Sandra Bland Park as we move forward that, uh, idea and presentation. I think Mayor Allen is doing a presentation tomorrow in reference to, uh, of the work that the city is, is gonna be doing on that project. Um, and then also having the opportunity to serve with Councilman Randall as we both announce officially, um, that we are, uh, on a host committee. We're planning, the Black Millennial, uh, convention is coming to Houston, Texas. And, uh, we both serve on the host committee. Um, and it'd be an opportunity for students from Prairie View, Texas Southern, but also young professionals to engage in, uh, conversations, um, in, in a safe space that's edified to the soul. So again, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to serve, uh, on the city council. And if you have any questions, please drop me out.
Councilman Randall?
Thank you. Um, I just thought, uh, kind of piggyback off Councilman Rosemary. As he said, we are on the host committee for the Black Millennial Convention. This one, it's main purpose is to try, to try tonight and engage our, our millennial generation for our civic engagement. This is a conference that has been held, um, all over the country. It started in DC and it's been, it's been in Tennessee. It's actually gonna, they're actually gonna have one in Tennessee in the next couple of weeks, I guess. And so now it's, it's like a tool where they're going from, from the city to city, different major cities that are hosting this conference. And so this is our opportunity to, uh, bring it to Texas and, um, get our, our young millennials who are looking for spaces and information about how to be engaged, try to get them involved in that process. Um, I also had the opportunity to spend, uh, last Saturday, I went to the United Negro College Fund in the, Mayor Bellis' masquerade ball. Uh, it was a room full of electric officials from Dallas area as well as some of the, uh, some of the elite people in that community. And it was a good experience. And, you know, we raised money for, you know, the United Negro Fund goes to different college students who go to HBCU. And so it was a good opportunity to be involved in that. As always, it's, it's a pleasure to serve and, uh, look forward to continue to work for the city.
Councilman Jones?
Greets. Had, I'll go to the Miss Prayer Breakfast this past month. Also, uh, was welcome to a few church homes within the community, uh, as well as, um, still working on a historical landmark, uh, for Sandra Bland. Um, as well as, uh, had the opportunity, um, to see that I was getting older in age. Uh, I'm playing kickball with the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts yesterday, uh, at the kickoff event for Protect the Village, um, that Councilman Wallace, uh, has been doing for quite some time since he's been in office. Great event. Uh, nice to see, um, the kids smile, interact, fun, uh, learn how to win and lose. Um, and to support one another, teammates and seeing parents come out there and have a good time. A great job, job well done, Councilman Wallace. Uh, also had the chance to, uh, with, um, several of the council members see up today to march with the students and supporting their effort to, uh, march to the polls. Uh, as well as, uh, tomorrow, there'll be a community diversity, uh, meeting, um, at which the mayor is sitting on the panel, uh, to discuss, uh, how we continue to move forward together. And always, as I said, saying, blessed to have the opportunity to serve you guys. Please keep me uplifted. Please keep me uplifted, uh, in your prayers at this moment in time. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Uh, good evening, nice to see everyone. First, I want to say the E D C board, um, has moved forward with getting a director. We have hired a search committee. We've also put together a search team, um, with community and the people from the community to work with him. So we've completed that. We're also making subcommittees, um, for all the different projects that we're gonna be engaging in for the E D C. Um, so we're trying to move forward, we're trying to do some things on, um, E D C board. Um, I work with some wonderful people. Um, Mr. Easy is a great president. Um, and the ladies that I serve on that committee did as well, um, worked very hard. So we're doing some great work. And also, uh, the next town hall meeting will be on the twenty-eighth at five thirty here at City Hall.
Councilman Wallace?
Good evening, everyone. So, um, as Councilman Jones mentioned, uh, we're in the middle of Protect the Village, which is a three week initiative, uh, for community service, social bonding, historical preservation. So the first week, we did community service in the Prairie Hill Southern Division, um, helped clean up some of the area, pick up trash, just a beautiful area. And then on the Sunday, we went to United Methodist Church where they had their Black History Program, uh, under Reverend Thompson. So we were there, students were out there, uh, supporting the community with other community members, supporting those who were honored at that event. Uh, and then yesterday, we had, uh, the first annual kickball, I mean, yeah, first annual kickball game between Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. It was, it was great. Parents came out, the students or the, uh, the kids competed. We had students like, had like cheerleading teams. We had live, made it look like a, a playoff game. So it was just a really great event. I actually got a video, we had a videographer, um, uh, videotaping. So I'll make it the next meeting and I'll get to show y'all, cause I just think it was a great event. Uh, coming up, I want to say this Friday, we're trying to partner with Dollar General to do a free car wash. Uh, so anyone that wants to get their car cleaned, you have the opportunity. Um, and we're gonna try to do one more gathering event, uh, this Saturday, which is gonna be the, the cookout that we did last year and replicate that. So, um, next, uh, I've been working with Councilman Rowland, it's there with the USW, uh, tapping fees, uh, but we'll talk about more of the agenda. Uh, last, last city councilman also mentioned, uh, mentioned because we didn't spend too much money on infrastructure, uh, last year, that some of that money rolled over. So we want to have, uh, infrastructure community forums where we can talk about what are some of the needs in different parts of the community. So I'll propose some days and times in sections of other communities. So you know, we can go out and speak up on what you think the community needs in terms of infrastructure needs. Uh, lastly, uh, I've been working on a steering committee for a Waller County Conference. Uh, I've connected with a couple of cities in Waller County that agree that they would like to do a conference annually, just so we can share resources and information and restart, uh, creating that relationship. Uh, so my hopes is that we can officially have it by the end of the year and that the steering committee just continues to work for, to bring it together. So as more information comes out, I'll be sure to let everybody know. But other than that, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the great city of Prairie.